Hey, I would like to call media. November 20th, school board meeting to work. We honor our students.
Right here.
I believe in the United States of America. Consider Republic which stands on my nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, welcome everybody. My name is Denise Sturridge and I am the board president. Before we begin, I want to remind everyone that the agenda and meeting cap are made available on our district website at least 24 hours prior to the start of each meeting. Please note that while we strive to provide all relevant materials in advance, modifications to the agenda are permissible. Alright, we're going to begin with board recognition. And we'll invite Dr. Lucian Derrick Smith up to introduce our topic today, for recognition.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to introduce this month's district-wide recognition honoring the exceptional contributions of our educational staff associates and our support staff. Who work diligently, whose work diligently strengthens student success. The essays are educational staff associates are highly trained professionals who provide specialized services that support students academic progress, social emotional development, and overall home. This group includes school counselors, nurses, psychologists, social workers, speech-language pathologists, occupational therapists, physical therapists, and behavior specialists. Each role requires specific preparation and state certification to meet the standards of the professional educator standards board. Alongside our essays, we are also recognizing some support staff whose safety work is essential to keep these students safe, supported, and ready to learn. These roles such as behavior supporters. About being a partner in this, it helps remove barriers, strengthen connections, and ensure students receive the immediate support they need. Together, our essays and support staff make a proactive team. Your expertise, compassion, and commitment help students feel confidence, overcome challenges, and thrive in school and in life. So at this time, I would like to call up the principals. I'll go ahead and call the order, and that's the order in which we will present this evening. So we have Lisa Crowell, Starla Watson, Jody Jarman, Becky Fowler, Holly Ackerman, Charles Cook, Craig Curry, and then for him tonight is Anthony Kichojo, Mark Boden, and Chris Clark, and for Curtis Flatter. So that's the order in which we will come. So the first is the set of four students.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Lisa Crowell, and I am the principal at Fort Stevens, and I would like to invite my amazing school counselor, and it's Gerald Mail, about to come next to me. So I've been talking about how amazing she is. Alright, so I'm delighted to share some insights about our exceptional school counselor, D.C. Gaynor is truly a utility player, much like those invaluable team members that every coach dreams of having. This past season, our Mariners nearly reached the World Series, and just as each player was vital, Gaynor is essential on our team. Gaynor is the kind of counselor who is in it for the students, willing to move mountains to ensure they have what they need. She offers students so much. Here are just a few examples. Essential brains, assisting with social emotional healing, supports in the classroom, organizing lunch punch groups where students can build their social skills. Partners with teachers to help students who are struggling and she needs one-on-one with students who have concerns or need a supportive listening ear. She also helps students find solutions with peers through distorted conversations. The list really does just go on. She brings the same dedication to our staff. She can really impact a school's supportive academic ballpark. She spent 15 years in the minors as a para at Fort Stevens, and then she went on to the major leagues, gaining 10 years of experience as a school counselor, including four years in Yale and the last two years at Fort Stevens. Her impact has been profound. I was fortunate when she joined our team following the rift, and her previous principal's praise was not an exaggeration. No matter the challenge, Gaynor approaches it with a put me and coach attitude. Even when the bases are loaded and the stakes are high, she steps up to the plate and consistently hits a home run. As the sole administrator in the building, I know that without her support, I wouldn't be able to do the job that I do. Her support is vital to our team's success. I wholeheartedly recommend and nominally Gaynor for MVP.
I would like to invite up here with me our behavior support assistant, D.C. Gaynor. Well, she comes out of Starla Watson, the principal of Lackamas. Megan joined our Lackamas family this year as our behavior support assistant, and she has brought an exceptional dedication to her work in our school. From day one, she jumped in confidently, ready to support students and staff alike, as she balances responsibilities across two schools with remarkable grace. Her knowledge and skill help us all navigate she's there for support. We were brainstorming other ways we were sitting here waiting. Whether working with individual students, being a calm presence for our adults, or documenting data and observations. Her credibility and consistency makes students feel safe and respected. Her quick growth professional support for colleagues strengthens our whole team. Her stellar work arrives at much needed time, and her calm compassionate presence has already made a meaningful difference in our school community. We are so thankful for Megan. This is a well-deserved.
Good evening. I'm Jody Jarman, the principal of McKenna Elementary, and tonight I'd like to honor Myrna Porter, who is my school counselor at McKenna. Um, to know her is a love, Myrna. In these past two years, Myrna's had to split her time both in my building and at Mill Pond, and although I wish I could just have her full time, I'm. I don't know if I should show her full time. But, um, Myrna, her impact, I actually wrote this, I just don't remember it right, but I, I. Her impact is often quiet, often by the sea, and yet deeply transformed. She ensures that every student feels seen, valued, supported, not just academically, but emotionally and socially. Her work reminds our students that school is not only a physical, but a place to grow. Over the past few years, Myrna's had to jump on her time, as I said, between our building and Mill Pond, and yet she is able to still hold her invaluable energy, which allows our students to have a personal touch point and a trusted relationship with her. Through her SCL lessons and her small groups, she's able to work with our students and work with their emotions, help them solve conflicts, build coping strategies, and develop that confidence to advocate for themselves. Myrna continues to strengthen and build partnerships beyond just the school day. She continues to build family connections and supports to help our families feel welcomed, included, and empowered as partners in those who succeed. What makes Myrna so exceptional isn't only the programs that she helps run, it's her compassion, professionalism, and her consistency that she brings to every interaction. She shows up for students on the hardest days, and she celebrates their success. She models empathy, patience, and unwavering belief that every student can succeed. Because of her work, students feel safer, families feel supported, and McKenna is a stronger, more connected community. Myrna, I love the staff. Are so lucky to have you, and we are profoundly a better place area than you're in. So again, we have our staff, our families mentioned, who are great for you coming down, and we honor you tonight. So thank you.
I'm Becky Fowler, the principal of Mill Pond Elementary, and tonight we are honoring Miss Casey Johnson, our school psychologist. Um, but there is definitely a theme this evening, and we are honoring people who are spread amongst multiple buildings. So Sharon is Karen. I also get to share Casey with McKenna, and Megan is one of our colleagues, Sharon as well. Casey and I have got the opportunity to work together for four years now, and her impact is just, I can't even describe it. She's an integral part of our MTSF structures with providing interventions and communication and collaboration with teachers, our staff. We've got a new program in the building this year, and with Casey's in there, like every step of the way. So I truly cannot imagine going without you, and on behalf of myself and the other staff, we thank you.
My name is Holly Ackerman, and I'm the principal of Direct Therapy. Am I a good to celebrate your persia? It's walking its way over here. Yeah, here she is. She might have some dents.
Don't need the clapper.
Yeah. Alright, so Laura is our school psychologist here at Curry, and I also share her, who's locked in the startup over there. Um, yeah, I mean Sharon is Karen, okay? Whoever's saying, yeah, Sharon is Karen. Although we always wish her a curse. Um, she also did her internship at Curry along with Kristen Carter, and so when I heard that Kristen. Laura was first, I feel like, so I'm worried. She is a natural fit here at Curry, for sure. Laura is always positive and completely student-focused. She's destined to support staff with value piece and individual student needs. She brings creativity, problem-solving to tough situations, and is always building strong trusting connections with families so that their voices are heard. Her ability to listen to battle day concerns, to translate a family input into actionable support has already made a real difference for students at our school. Although she interned in secondary, right, secondary? Yeah. You are an elementary person at heart. It might be supposed to, I forgot that secret, but she is elementary at heart. Uh, with her warmth, her energy, and patience, she leads young learners at the right level. Laura is incredibly passionate about students she serves and about creating strong systems that help every child thrive. I'm continually impressed by her creative thinking, her follow-through on plans, and her determination to find positives and learn the other situation. Beyond her technical skills, Laura brings a collaborative spirit. She's quick to share resources, coaches staff, she celebrates small wins with teams. Her presence has strengthened our school community and made the path for her clearer for students who need extra support. We're so lucky to have one on our team. Thank you for supporting our students back in this effort.
Hi, good evening. My name is Charles Scott, the principal of the elementary, and excitingly, he is Mr. Schultz. Again, she is the principal of the Commonwealth State, but also a member of. When we were talking about this, you did a criteria, there was only one person we could think of, so curiously, please come on down. Uh, we were both fighting over who got to go first and what we could say, and we tried to minimize the amount that you were saying because there was a lot that we could. So the three things that I got to say was, she's a valued member of our school's team and our SCL team. She's a positive personality that consistently brings out the best in others' students or staff. She is always willing to help with any child with his needing emotional support or issue. Exactly, we be working with a kid that's having a tantrum in the hallway, and she just kind of pushes the mouse aside, works with them, and gets them to go to her office, and they come out smiling, so.
Alright. She's a positive person, or a positive person. But she truly is a wonderful asset to us, that always shows us our relationships. And it's not just for the child. She just has a way with kids, walking up and down the hall. She's always willing to go that extra mile to help staff, to help students. And she makes me a better principal, because I can always ask her, what do you think about that? She's in our I A communities, she is very passionate, and she, she also does a great job of working with families, and so she always has a smile and stuff that can be the same for her. Thank you. Congratulations.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Anthony Kichojo, proud vice principal of Bridge Island Middle School, goes to war. I'm standing in for Mr. Curry, our principal, and he texted me some words to say about Ms. Sophia Akar, AKA Sophie, who's also not here. I told Mark Boden when it's time for the hug, maybe he's standing for the hug. Uh, excuse me. Uh, so these are words from Mr. Curry. Ms. Akar is a true asset to our school and a true advocate for some of our most vulnerable population, students. She is highly knowledgeable and competent, and we appreciate her amazing contributions to our school. I agree with all of that, and I'd like to add, she's highly professional, easy to get along with, she has a great sense of humor, she's everything that you would want from a school side. And I see an hitter in the back, and I want to say that she also is a very, very good hitter. No shade. I don't know the difference. Thank you, Val. That was a good end of day. Uh, Val, come on up. Uh, Val can go to the cell down the table. Actually, we, and it's like, I don't need to bring anything because I can talk about Val forever. And then she came in, and I was like, you're about that thing, you're not thinking about me. So anyway, that's actually. Um, Val has a job title, health room assistant, but the reality is that doesn't even begin to describe her job in her back on YMS. She's often the only person in our, in our building of almost 700 kids, taking care of them, looking out for them, and, you know, just covering up the scratches, taking care of these little kids. Uh, the, the thing that she, her job, she does exceptionally every single day. The part of it that is beyond is her care in which she does it. When we talk about creating a sense of belonging in young community schools, we could just look at that and watch her to see an example of that. The relationship that she builds with her regular customers is closer to one of family than it is of customers, right? And then the, the ones that just come in because they bruised their, or whatever, she takes care of in a way that I know that as a father, I would hope that my kids will take care of at, at their school. Um, she is a, she is a rock for these kids. She is there for whatever they need. But Val's impact goes beyond the walls of the health room. She is a connection to our community with regular calls, checking on new positions, to reach out to families for support. She is a coach with our track team. She's a cheerleader for our staff, and she's an advocate for her colleagues. The bottom line is that we have a special thing going on in YMS that is built around what I call the culture of care. Val is the heart of this, and we wouldn't be this thing about her. Thank you so much.
Jeanne provides what needs to be a school counselor. She's built a new church culture in ways that joyful in her town. Whether it's organizing secret staff service, um, the Disney award this week, which I wouldn't fit in, was quite a piece of her. Maggie's birthday, sorry, I missed that part, but I thought it was a Disney day, and I missed that. So, uh, and simply, the biggest thing is keeping your door open to not only our kids, but our staff are always welcome and feeling part, part of the team. Largely due to Jeanne's ability to create image of that is with us sometimes, where sometimes we all just need a picture. Jeanne is the kind of colleague whose new counselors look up to for guidance. We have two new in, in our system there that look for a day. Not only because of her deep knowledge of the young community school systems, but because of her generous patience and wayward commitment to helping others succeed. She's a trusted mentor, a creative leader, and a true part of our community school. Jeanne, your dedication strengthens the bonds among staff and students alike, and your spirit is made by a place where people feel seen, supported, inspired. We're grateful for your leadership, your kindness, and joy for your school today. You simply make the best of it, and so congratulations.
There we go. Alright, good, there. Ready? One, two, three, or five, six, seven.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
I don't want to shake the hand, I want to hug.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And thank you.
You help.
Thanks.
They are the bowling match.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
She's very excited.
Go on the direction.
Me, you tell me.
Alright, next is superintendent comments.
I will be pretty brief this evening. Just want to update the little board that you guys know this, obviously, the levy has been thought we find. A couple of things. So next Tuesday, the vote gets certified. Once the vote is certified, I'll be sending on communication to our families and to our staff. I don't know exactly what time on Tuesday it'll be certified, but as soon as it is, it's late in the day, I'll send it out in the evening, otherwise send it out earlier. So that'll talk about some of the steps we are taking immediately and the steps moving forward. I do want to remind folks about binding conditions, because what's different about this time in our budget cuts is that our district does not operate alone in this process anymore. Now what happens is we move into what's called a financial oversight. Denise was on the call on the meeting last week with OSPI and EST. That is a regular quarterly meeting. I am also meeting weekly myself with OSPI and EST to discuss very specific budget issues and plans moving forward. So as, as part of the financial oversight process, OSPI will be coming to the January 22 board meeting. And that has to be a specific step in the process where they have to accept our new binding conditions and entering into financial oversight. Financial oversight is where they identify a committee that takes a closer look at our finances, which is already happening. Uh, it's, it's been happening, and we've already been working in collaboration with them. So then, once that committee is developed, in addition to the votes from OSPI and EST, they then work in collaboration with us as we move forward. They do not govern as far as, they do not have authority over the cuts we make. However, they are involved in the process, they are involved in the recommendations, they are involved in the brainstorming, and all that. So the plan is not our plan alone. We already have some very concrete ideas of where cuts need to be made, in addition to other cuts that we'll be making. And given the magnitude of cuts that need to be made, everything will have to be on the table. There is no area of our district that we are not looking at, and that includes, like I said, immediate cuts and future cuts. In addition to the financial oversight committees and order that we move with them, we also created a 24 month, 24 plus. The goal when we're in financial oversight is two years to get out of financial oversight. That is the goal of OSPI, that is the goal of EST 113, and that is obviously our goal as well. So we work very closely with them. Again, this is not something we do in isolation. I continue to meet with them weekly. We are also very aware that there are some cuts that are going to need to be decided upon before January 22. And that's where he goes aboard in the coming board meetings, are going to need to make some decisions, because we do have some things that are time-sensitive as far as expectations and impacts beyond our school district. And so we'll continue talking about that and scheduling additional study sessions to specifically just talk about that. So I just wanted to update you on the process, and Denise will continue to attend, in addition to another board member as well, all of our binding condition meetings, and then I will continue to meet weekly with EST and OSPI to continue to do a deep dive into our finances. Also, in addition to that, our CFO resigned, and so we are working with EST as our business manager in the meantime, which actually works very well in conjunction with our financial situation. So they are already intimately involved in day-to-day operations in all aspects of our district. So the partnership actually is, is good timing for us to have them very involved in the day-to-day operations. And then Dee Dee and I. And then, uh, Dee Dee and I, uh, speak with them on a daily basis in regards to expenditures. Uh, so I don't know if you guys have any questions, but I will certainly be keeping up to date on, uh, all that information moving forward and, uh, pretty regular emails with information from, uh, OSPI and EST. All right. Um, guess have a question. All right, community comments. One. Yes, we have one. We have Merna Porter talking about attendance and engagement. And we're, and there is a microphone. Okay. All right. I want to remind everyone of the guidelines to comment and inform with policy fourteen hundred. For comments on non-agenda items, the board will listen, but will not engage in discussion or take action tonight. Non-agenda items may be referred to administration for follow-up comments. Um, comments are limited to three minutes per speaker and fifteen minutes per topic. Um, please note that, uh, comments directed at performance of specific school personnel are not permitted. All remarks must be appropriate for an open public meeting and presented respectfully. The board president will stop comments that violate these expectations and disruptions beyond the comment period may result in the meeting being paused or ended. Additionally, the board's silence during public comments should not be interpreted as agreement or endorsement of the speaker's remarks. Our role during this portion is to listen. We value your participation and appreciate your cooperation in helping us maintain a respectful and productive meeting environment. Okay, Merna, you're up.
Uh, so I'm Merna Porter. I'm the school counselor at Connaught Elementary. I have been in the district for a while now. Um, prior to being the school counselor, I was a fourth grade teacher. Uh, I was a fourth grade teacher back when we were adopting new curriculum. Um, and that's, that's kind of a, a little bit of what I'm going to go into a little bit tonight. This is kind of a preview. I'm actually going to, um, bombard you all with some more information in the coming weeks. So, um, and, and advise you to engage in some conversations. Um, there's been a lot of conversation lately, uh, in the CISA meetings, um, about attendance and engagement. And we know that there's a direct correlation between those things and academic achievement and behavior. And so, um, while I am not a fan of the curriculum we've adopted in the past, um, I've taught it. It's very challenging. Uh, most of those kind of stretches beyond the common core state standards. And as a fourth grade teacher, I felt like I had to do a song and dance daily to keep my kids engaged. Um, and you can feel like we're, we're stuck with it for now. There's, you know, we have no money. We can't look at your dog, but curriculum adoption. But we do need to kind of look at some ways that we can improve attendance, attendance and engagement and make school more enticing for our students. And so today I'm specifically going to address early childhood education. I started my career in nineteen ninety-eight teaching preschool. And so, and then I've actually taught in your kindergarten. It's the worst year of my life, but, um, I learned a lot of things and I love little people that's just helping for me for teaching. Um, I want to show you what a kindergarten day looks like. So I'm not going to show them all to you. These are six math worksheets for one lesson in a day. I have four writing and reading pages for reading, and that's just reading skills. That's not the domain. Our kindergartners are sitting and listening for a third portion of the day, and then they're asked to be working. And we. Okay. I have a lot of education early in childhood. This is not developed to be appropriate for our students. They should not be sitting doing worksheets. All of the psychologists that we look to propel them play-based and social learning at age seven, eight, ten. So this is not appropriate. Other schools are catching on because we keep doing the same thing and we're still not getting the results we want. We continue to shove more and more of this at our students. We continue to see a decline in attendance. We continue to see a decline in engagement and an increase in maladaptive behaviors. Olympia caught on a long time ago. They actually do a lot of play-based and center-based learning in their, in their kindergarten and first grade. Uh, if you saw the news article, Tom Warner is now adopting play-based learning. They have required that as much as Olympia, but they're, they're on the way. And North Thurston, who I got a little bit when I worked there, they have now figured out our kids need to be playing in school. We have five and six-year-olds that hate school. I know because I talked to them. At the very fourth, fifth grade. Those are the years where we are building the foundations and helping them develop relationships and learn about their students. They need to not be doing this. They need to be working on those skills so that when they go to first, second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, ninth, or 10th grade, they have the need to be able to be successful and maintain their emotions with regular behavior. We gotta do something. Okay? We should not be in last place here. We need to change the process. We can make a choice here. We can change, but we're doing it. I'm asking you by any program. There are ways to do this. Let's put them to the joint. Give them something to come to school and enjoy it.
I'm in kindergarten. Yes, he, he likes yarn because he wants to go to first grade. All right, um, school board minutes. I move, we approve.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Individual contracts.
I second.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Acceptance of gifts.
I vote we approve.
I second.
All right, and there's, uh, well, there's for reunion, we have such a generous community. We have, I'm just going to call them out. Kona Ice for our athletics, high school athletics, um, Traveling Tom's Coffee for athletics, and then Alumni for, uh, the kids to go to Nationals and then Washington Cattle Motes Association for, uh, Nationals, Women's Cattle Association, excuse me, um, for Nationals. So. All right. Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. All right, the continuous school improvement plans. I move, we approve.
I second.
Any discussion? Please, anything I need to say?
Just, these are the plans that principals, uh, do at their schools annually, and they set the plan in the fall. They look at their data. They reexamine the plan in a year, make adjustments, and then they reflect it at their, coming here. I would say the difference now is that their strategic, uh, their school improvement plans are aligned with the strategic plan. So all the goals are exactly the same.
All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. All right, um, oh, one thing I forgot is that Bill Haas has been excused this evening. He had, um, knee replacement surgery, so he'll be hugging in here next board meeting. Um, policy revisions. Um, let's see here. All right, the first one. Oh.
That connection.
Yeah. Yeah. The second, the second.
I second.
All right, now, discussion. All right, um, we've got a lot of policy work, uh, here. We spent um, a little over two hours in our last study session going through each one of these in detail. Um, the first section that you, uh, have a first and second on the table is section D, uh, non-substantive revisions. These actually do not need more action, however, uh, we're bringing them forward because we think that, uh, all of our policies and procedures should go before the org. Uh, so the change for twenty-one sixty-two, thirty-one, two, twenty-two, and thirty-two, twenty-five, all of these um, have required us to change the phrase, uh, emergency expulsion to emergency removal. So in all three of these policies, that is the change. Everywhere it said emergency expulsion, uh, we had to change it to emergency removal, which is the new terminology for, uh, removing a student from, uh, the educational setting. And you guys had a chance to look at all these. You have either just like this one, Casey else in front of them that, uh, we went through in great detail. So, um, those are the first three on, on the table, and I'll have to make a team for any questions or to take action. And then, um, if parents are certainly right, that I can ask to have those terms changed in the student record. Yes, I believe it goes back to two thousand and nineteen. Any parent that would like to come back and have their discipline record changed to emergency removal from, uh, emergency expulsion, then, uh, we would do that and then update the record and give that to them. That's on request based on, uh, the ICW. I'm waiting for, are there any other questions? I don't know those two. All right, uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. And then the next policy revisions and replacements. Those are just, uh, information we still have to go through again. Yeah, these are all information on the, uh, you will determine, uh, if we move it forward to separating in, uh, the next board meeting or if we continue discussion on them. Uh, they are revision or replacement. And I just want to remind, uh, really more for the audience because you guys heard this maybe in class, uh, that policies land in three areas. They land in the critical area, which means it's required by state or federal law, uh, or tied to funding eligibility. And the purpose is that it ensures legal compliance and access to necessary resources. So anything that's critical comes down from the state, uh, from law to OSPI to WASDA, uh, which then, uh, perhaps the new policy and sends it out to districts to adopt. Then there's also important, which is the other category, uh, not legally required, but supported by case law and findings of best practices. This helps prevent litigation, promotes well-being of the school community. And then, um, there's discretionary. Discretionary is, uh, there's no legal mandate or liability. These are usually board-driven agendas or initiatives or district. Uh, example unused is self-help policy. Currently, that's not in state statute, but could be in the future, but that's an example of a policy that we look for. So, um, there's three areas, and again, each one has a different set of requirements. Critical, um, is required. And we're going to talk, um, very specifically about twenty twenty and, um, Dr. Lisa Kero Smith is going to do, uh, a presentation on that because this is the one that has the, uh, uh, I think the most concern and need for discussion. We spent a lot of time on this in our study session talking, and I think there were six or seven people in the audience um, that got to hear that conversation. But we were all in agreement that this is a conversation that needs to happen out in the open. Uh, this is something that, um, districts are being required to adopt and implement in their district, uh, because of law. And so the other ones above that, twenty-one sixty-one, thirty-one forty-three, forty-two sixty, thirty-two oh seven, twenty-four twenty, uh, those are all, uh, pretty minor, either revisions or complete replacements uh, that take out complete sections in those. Uh, you've had lots of time to read, to look over. Um, you've had each one of those in very, uh, in great detail as far as the changes of those. They do not change necessarily the intent of the policy. Um, however, we believe in twenty twenty is one of those that, um, we were in complete agreement that we need more inspection on this one. And at the end of this tonight, you may say, we're not ready to move this forward to second reading. And we want even more information on this. If you want to do some more digging, then you may choose to just move the others forward. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lisa to share a little more information.
Well, do you mind going to the next slide? All right, before we begin our discussion about this policy, I want to acknowledge that the decisions about what we teach and how we teach it matter deeply. They shape the learning experiences of our students and they reflect our district's responsibility to ensure high-quality, legally sound instruction in every classroom. In Washington State, the legislature and state education agencies determine the learning standards and many of the policies that guide public education. Local districts, however, are responsible for how those standards are implemented through decisions about curriculum, instructional materials, and teaching practices. Instruction is the core of what we do. The materials we use and the way we supply them shape how students think, engage, and prepare for their futures. These decisions are foundational to teaching and learning. And we also know that the instructional content can be personal for families and it reflects values and beliefs. Tonight, we're presenting updates to policy twenty twenty and procedure twenty twenty key course design, selection, and adoption of instructional materials that are required by law. These updates stem from Senate Bill fifty-four sixty-two and House Bill twenty-three thirty-one. They both became effective July first of this year, as well as the Supreme Court's decision in Mahud v. Taylor, which took effect in April of this year. Together, they mandate the school district's use materials that reflect varied student experience, prohibit rejection of content based on protective class perspectives, and require timely response to religious opt-out requests by families. These updates are not optional. They're legal mandates that ensure the district continues to provide instruction lawfully. So as mentioned, these updates are rooted in the new, in new state legislation, Senate Bill fifty-four sixty-two, which takes effect, which took effect under line first, twenty twenty-five, is one of the key drivers. This law requires that districts adopt instructional materials that reflect the broad range of student experiences. It also prohibits excluding content solely because it includes perspectives related to protective classes. In other words, instructional materials must be selected in a way that is consistent with the law's expectation that students see a variety of experiences and viewpoints reflected in what they learn. In addition to Senate Bill fifty-four sixty-two, House Bill twenty-three thirty-one, further defines what's required. House Bill twenty-three thirty-one directs school boards to formally document how instructional materials are selected and reviewed. It reinforces that materials cannot be excluded simply because they include perspectives associated with protective classes. Together with Senate Bill fifty-four sixty-two, this legislation clarifies both the expectations for what materials must include and the process districts must follow to ensure. The third legal change affecting this policy comes from the U.S. Supreme Court. The third legal change affecting this policy comes from the U.S. Supreme Court. Mahud v. Taylor requires all of school districts to accommodate parent requests to opt their children out of specific instructional content based on sincerely held religious beliefs. Districts must provide a timely written response provided by school days and offer an adequately appropriate alternative that does not stipulate due. This ruling establishes a clear legal obligation and is reflected in the updated procedure. So the policies and procedures we're updating are not optional, and RCW 28A.300.0714 makes that clear. This statute gives the Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction authority to take action if a district does not comply with the state law. Those actions may include financial penalties, administrative consequences for district leadership, or even recall proceedings for board members in cases of willful or negligent noncompliance. The law reinforces the seriousness of these requirements and the importance of lawful implementation. So this slide brings together the specific requirements the district must follow under the updated policy. Instructional materials must be age-appropriate and reflect varied perspectives. Parents have a legal right to request exemptions for religious reasons, and the district must respond within five days and provide an alternative. The policy also affirms that at least one parent must serve on the instructional materials committee and that parents have the right to review, raise concerns, or file formal complaints about instructional content. Last, instructional materials may not be excluded simply because they include content related to protected class perspectives. These provisions are now legal expectations for all public school districts in Washington. So then our implementation plan as a district, I think that's the important point, kind of what do we do moving forward? So our first steps are, first of all, really being sure that we're aligned to the legal framework. And so what that means is that we're following the key tenants in the policy as aligned to the RCWs, the laws, the statutes that guide this particular policy. It will require us to take a look at our curriculum adoption procedures and making sure that we select materials that reflect a range of student experiences. What I will tell you is that is already part of our process. It also requires for the instructional materials committee that we update our evaluation tools and we got it trained so committee members apply legal standards consistently. We'll also develop user-friendly, legally-aligned rubrics and guidelines to support decision-making during all of our curriculum adoption cycles. We will collaborate regionally. So we'll coordinate with OSPI, neighboring districts, and legal advisors to ensure accuracy and consistency in applying state policy. And last, and most importantly, that we'll clearly inform families and staff of their rights, the complaint process, and procedures for religious opt-out and other requests. So last slide, in conclusion. First, this update is not optional. It reflects legal requirements that are now in effect for all public school districts in Washington. Second, this policy ensures that our district is in compliance with state and federal law. It also affirms our commitment to follow a transparent, structured process. Third, every step we've outlined tonight is aligned with the expectations set by the legislature, the courts, and the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction. And we also recognize that instructional materials are deeply important for our families. And this policy is strong interest in our community. That's why the implementation plan includes clear steps for family communication, staff training, and structured procedures for feedback and opt-out requests. Our goal is to ensure that every student has access to high-quality instruction that meets legal standards while giving families ways to engage. We appreciate the board's leadership as we navigate these requirements. The changes are challenging, but we're approaching them with professionalism, clarity, and a commitment to doing what is required and supporting the community we serve. So at this time, I'm going to open up the floor for discussion on the board.
As I said before, Lisa presented, this is one that we spent a lot of time, a big portion of our two close hours study session, on this particular policy. Just policy in general about how we are now seeing one of policies and procedures that are being handed down to districts where districts have very little authority as it relates to the policy itself and the procedures. We've done a lot of research. We've talked with legal, in addition to, obviously, legal that has vetted this from probably an OSPI in Austin. One of the things that some districts will do is, in the policy, a way of saying, we don't necessarily completely agree with this policy and what is written in it will say something to the effect of, as required by the state. This is difficult. There is no way around it. That is why as a board, as a group, we very specifically said, this has to be discussed in the open. This has to be a conversation out in the open. This is not something that you can just move forward with and not have a conversation. So with that, I want to pass the mic down on you guys' conversation.
And I wasn't there when I guess we discussed this on publication, but I know there are handful of school districts who didn't live in the city of Washington, parents place bill. Are any districts starting the process of final litigation of these two that you will look?
Not that I've heard of yet. Doesn't mean that it's not in the works, but it's not public yet that we have heard of.
I mean, I personally, I can't vote gay on this bill when it does come. I need more time. I think we need more time to kick this down. But the whole purpose of us being on the board is supposed to be making decisions that are right for our families and our kids. And this policy straight up clips the board's only what to do that specifically tells us that the board can't make a curriculum adoptions. There's no point in being on the board if you can't support what your people are on the stage showing some fans that ask for. This is egregious. This is egregious to me. So at this point, I definitely need more time, but I can't morally feel good about what you missed through.
Well, we can always talk. I mean, yeah, for first, this is just the first meeting.
Yeah, it's the first meeting, but if you push it through to the first meeting, you can throw it on next time, I thought.
Yeah, I know. So you want more information.
Maybe get more information or we can vote on it next time. But I don't know what level of information we need. It's kind of changing my mind at this point.
I think one of the things that we are doing is having conversations with other districts. There are some that have already passed the policy procedures, put them in place. There are others that have not. There was a requirement on timeline for this, and I think there are districts that feel similar to us in that we want to have all the information available to us before we are forced to make a final decision on this. And so we are perfectly fine with continuing to try to gather information. We can continue to seek input from other districts that are in a similar situation. And I simply asked our legal counsel, who represents many districts, larger and smaller, if there was any current litigation around this. And they said, no, not yet. But it could be. So we are perfectly fine with not moving this to second reading, if that's the wish of the board, and continuing to research and gather information.
One more question on this, I guess.
These are all RCWs or any labs associated with this as well?
I would need to double check. I think just RCW.
And I'd just like to say that me being off the board, I think the new board member needs some time to look at this and go over it. And it's called now. I think I agree that we need more time.
More time.
Yeah, I think there needs to be further discussion on it. I know we hammered it out at our last study session, but going over it, it's real complex. More than anything, if we move that local control, we don't always align it, but it pushes down the pipeline. Again, there's opt-out language, but you know, we see opt-outs, like I said. We're going to see opt-out social studies. I think this just opens up the gate. You're going to see opt-out math eventually when does the curriculum stop being mandated by the state, just being pushed down the pipeline. So I know there'll be more conversation.
So we would need, given it, to the motion that's on the table. Currently, the motion on the table is to approve Section E. So I guess what we would need is just direction here to move the other school to second reading, but retain 2020. I guess we don't need a motion, but I think for the record, I think the statement is saying that we are not moving 2020 to the second reading.
We don't have a motion.
True, but anything for the record.
Oh, for the record.
Okay, so, all right. Do not move 2020.
For second reading.
To second reading.
Thank you.
Yeah, the rest.
The rest of us were okay moving to second reading, but not 2020.
Good.
All right.
This one, I mean, one other comment that was in relation to, this is talking about about instructional materials review committee. We just had that today, earlier today, four and a half of the day, based on a request of a parent in our district to review middle school sexual health education curriculum. And so our superintendent assembled the committee, went through the process at day, and there are some recommendations from the committee. And so there will be some changes coming forward. So I really just want to put that out to say that there's a process in place. And it was used well in this particular case based on a parent request. And the process was very effective and we saw. I think it's very relevant to this particular policy as well.
That's right. What was true was the parent who objected to this question of the curriculum was willing to put in a request for reconsideration. This triggers this process. And we had 25 people there today, 20? Well, under 20 people there today, cross-section of the community, staff members as well. And very, very productive discussion where we went through kind of state statutes, requirements, identified what we have autonomy over as a district and what the state requires in terms of standards. And then together, we made a decision. And in this particular case, we made a decision that we're going to move forward with the parents' request in regard to this curriculum. I think the other thing I might call out about 2020, and I think this could come in some of the work moving forward. The, there's an opportunity, I think, for us to kind of look at some of the underlying protective class language and learn a little bit more about that and how it's informing portions of 2020. But also look at Mahud v. Taylor because they are kind of two sides of a coin. So in this environment where we can potentially, we're looking at even more stringent standards around diverse curriculum, we also have something we've never had before, which is outside of comprehensive sexual health. Now, anywhere in the curriculum, a parent can petition that and can, you know, let us know that they do not want their child involved in that portion of the curriculum. And then we would be required to come up with another assignment and opt them out. So I just want to call that out. And I think, I think we just need more time to process through all the pieces of that and then decide as a district what you want the response to be.
Thank you.
So I know this is kind of silly, but if they're going to give us the option to opt out, then why are they putting all this on us? Why don't they just let us have the local control? I mean, that's a question that we can ask them. But if they're going to let us opt out, then why go through all the hoops to do all this stuff? Silly.
It's because they know that not every parent is going to take the time, that wants to opt out is going to take the time and effort to opt out, which we've seen already.
But that's our, so then that's our job is to opt out for everyone. But it's like, here we are, sitting here, that's our local control. And it's like, if we're going to opt out, just opt out.
But what kind of, what kind of system have we created where we have to have so many different curriculums that parents have to opt out? I mean, we're sitting here looking at where our education is at, specifically in the state of Washington, the nation as a whole. And there are kids struggling in math, kids struggling in reading. And we're spending a bunch of time and effort fighting because we have to opt them out of stuff that's not even, shouldn't even be part of a basic education. And now we're jumping through extra hoops to try to get us there where we should be focused on what really is important. So the whole system is broken.
Now you know why we need more time.
Yep. Got it.
Okay, now something fun. Pauline? How about something fun for Perry?
I can do that. I got you. I thought I'd lightened up the mood a little bit here. All right. Well, thank you school board members, members, and community members for coming over to Perry tonight. And we're allowing you time to share the Perry school with them for 25, 24. And I also want to acknowledge all the staff that are here tonight. I appreciate you being here. And I could know you were going to be here, so I definitely want to see you here. So thank you for taking the time. I know it's a late night. My aura rings that I should be getting ready for bed. Clearly not getting ready for bed. So I was kind of planning this and stressed and nervous about how I'm going to do this because you think about all the amazing things that happen every single day and everything that we do. How do you put it into 15 minutes or 10 minutes or five slides? And that's hard because there's a lot of really amazing things happening in this building. And so I hope I highlighted it and I hope I represent it well. I hope you better. Perry Youngers, who have been here for a long time, that haven't been here as long, but I hope I already just wanted it up. All right. Did any of you guys come to Perry? Did any of you on the school board? Okay, I want to share. This week's kind of fun for you. All right. Anyways, I am excited to share how Perry is committed to its three core commitments of learning and belonging and community that was supported by the strategic plan. I will reference some of the information and demographics that Perry provided and share some pictures so that you have a visual of what's happening at Perry. Those of you that don't know, this is my second year at Perry. And this year, our theme is grow stronger together. Last year, we all did a lot, just getting to know each other, learning about each other and putting systems into place. And this year, we're really continuing to strengthen our system and deepen our relationships of the staff with our community. And this year, we're really continuing to strengthen our system and deepen our relationships of the staff with our community. Um I agree with yours, and I put my face like that, but I have a point. Um I don't know if it is, but anyways, I thought maybe I should warn you, but Chris was. I'm gonna go with that. Alright, next slide, please. Thank you. Um so Perry Elementary is guided by core values of learning, belonging, and community. Together with staff, we set clear priorities, nurturing instructional excellence and creating more welcoming, well-organized spaces, both in classrooms and across the school. So every student, staff member, and family feels acknowledged, supported, empowered to grow. Our co-created staff dignity promise reinforces these values through respect, honest communication, trust-based teamwork. Safe expectations that encourage thoughtful risk-taking, reliable resources and technology, and a culture that um works on kindness, balance, and appreciation. Alright, next. So looking at our focus, I'll talk about some of the pictures towards the end. At Perry Learning is rooted in strong tier one instruction that supports every student and removes barriers to success. This year, our primary focus is high-quality intentional reading instruction, supported by targeted connection to core practices. That intentionally work on reading instruction, and we're going to close in the gaps in both reading and math. We use meaningful data conversations to guide strategy, collaborate to share effective practices. And continue strengthening our NTSS and our PLCs to provide timely supports and sharing commitment to every student's growth. At Perry Elementary, we create warm and welcoming environments where every student hopefully feels safe, respected, and ready to learn. Through daily morning meetings that build SBL skills. And by recognizing positive behavior, we teach and practice those specific social and emotional skills that help everyone. Students, staff, and families feel appreciated, valued, validated, and treated fairly. We intentionally foster connections through inclusive routines, classroom communities, and school-wide events that celebrate diversity and encourage empathy. Our community is deeply valued and appreciated, and teamwork is essential to how we operate. Staff, families, and community partners collaborate to identify and remove barriers, provide differentiated supports, and strengthen student success. By prioritizing belonging alongside academic growth, we ensure each child can engage competen- confidently. Contribute meaningfully and thrive both socially and academically. Uh I wanted to kind of point out some of these pictures to you. Um up on the top, I'll kind of talk about this a little bit. Um we get into further into there, but. We have a sister in our assembly. We do a positive attendance. Um we need to spend more for attendance. Kids really get a kick out of that at uh at assemblies. And then the picture in the middle is our new custodian, um Mr. Chris, who came from us from Yale Middle School. And it was Custodian Appreciation Day, and it was one of his like first days, actually, weeks or something in the building. And then the cute little kid in class, he will go with this adorable book to welcome him and also thank him for what he does. It's been a great, great um patch for our building. And then at the very bottom picture, those are some PTO families that have worked on our Halloween carnival. And they made a really fun, exciting event for all of our kiddos and some of our staff that came as well. Alright, so we're gonna get into learning. This is probably my favorite type of part to talk about, so we're gonna go to the next slide, please. So this year, we adjusted our attendance systems and celebrations to better support um student learning. Our team meets monthly to review attendance data. While our health room assistant and attendance specialist Ms. Abby monitors patterns daily and follows up with families. We focus on students who fall below our ninety percent attendance goal because chronic absentees are significantly affecting our learning. Each month at our Student of the Month Assembly, Ms. Abby spins that virtual wheel I talked about. Um of students who met the attendance criteria, and one student from every grade uh will win a small little treat. And they also give a keynote home to their families, letting them know of the celebrations. Students love that recognition. And if you can see that little guy in the middle where he received attendance recognition, the big old smile. Um and so we're continuing um to work on attendance. It's always something that's important, obviously. And so we're just hoping that we can raise our seventy one percent regular attendance rate and continue to move that even higher. Last year, our staff focused on strengthening math instruction um through collaborative conversations about strategies. And developing students' conceptual understanding. We emphasized building that systematic knowledge and using productive routines to improve learning. And staff are committed to applying these practices for our students. As um as the infographic from Perry shows, we saw strong areas of math instruction. Especially notable are the fourth and fifth grade median student growth percentile. Also want to acknowledge that grades three through five outperformed the YCS district average in most schools across Washington. Which is a celebration of our collective efforts and progress, and I'm really proud of our students. It's really impressive data. I also think it's um yeah, the first three, four, and five. I think it's also important to acknowledge what our kindergarten, first grade, and second grade teachers do, because they also get to that point. It's very important. It takes a team. Very, very big team. Um this year, we are focusing on ELA instruction. And as you can see in the infographic as well, it shows that our grade four has real strong growth in ELA. We still have some work to do with third and fifth grade in this area, but we're continuing to work on it. This year, we're working with Lori Gray and Anna Bayer of Tuesday. We are doing a book study on shifting the balance, uh which focuses on the science of reading. We also had our kinder teachers were trained in, trained in a blending practice. All of our grades one through four were trained on ninety five percent group, which focuses on explicit instruction and violence and phonemic awareness. And then grade five teachers were trained in rewards, which focuses more on that comprehension skills. And so all of those that were trained is, is something that they can work on during their intervention time to support and close those gaps. We're also implementing, which has been really fun to see teachers do, uh a one-minute drill with phonemic awareness across all grades. So these little one-minute drills are pretty flexible, little activities that you can do anytime. Those have been fun to see teachers use that. Um another special thing about Perry, and I totally have a video, but I didn't quite get that together. Um. Perry, we also have the functional learning classroom. Um after this came up, she teaches the upper grade and then this uh who services the lower grade. Students in the FLC spend most of their time in that classroom, but often go into the general education setting for specialists, maybe more media sectors, guidance, or research. These te- these kiddos teach us so much on a daily basis, and I, I truly think that this program does make Perry a better place. Um and I think it's a great place for kids to learn as well. Um Perry's NTSS core beats tiered support strong core instruction. It targets small group help and intensive interventions using regular progress monitoring. And our PLC team analyzes data, shares strategies, and designs interventions to do decisions that are consistent, timely, and focused on student success. Uh let's see, so picture wise, you can see on the top, I bet some of you didn't know you're being this uh little. Yeah, they're smiling now, right? Uh they have big smiles on their face, but this is right after they got trained on ninety five percent group with Erin and Lori. And it's all materials that we got from our OSSI grant from last year, ordered from last year, knowing that this is gonna be our goal for the year. And they're all smiles, and every single way the teacher showed up to support this, which I think is pretty cool. That says a lot about who we are. Um we talked about the kiddo that got the attendance award. And then this bottom picture right here is uh one of our newer teachers that came to our building, new to the district, I should say. And I don't know if you can see in the back, but she did a really cool um Olympic math thing that was a review, where she did a um module assessment review, but made it Olympic. And so the kids actually won some awards, and they're doing teamwork with the staff, so it was pretty cool. That was something to highlight. Alright. And then we're gonna go to the next slide. Thank you. At Perry, we continually foster belonging by modeling respect and creating a safe, welcoming place where every student can learn and grow. We have monthly character traits. Um we have monthly character traits that focus on building character. We talk about these each day during morning announcements and then celebrate them during our monthly assembly. This reinforces expected behavior and celebrates students that show that, show that we want to see these traits on a daily basis. These um expectations are reinforced school-wide and supported in grade, grade level, while this one stays less um lessons led by our specialists. Um one of our teachers uh in second grade, Mr. Venema. He had also, we're talking about belonging, he had his class create a dignity promise, which we did similar to the beginning of the year. And then he turned it into a song with his kids. And and it reminds them of what their daily commitments are. And it's pretty adorable to watch these kids. If you're ever bored around eight forty-five, nine o'clock in the morning, I can come bring you down to his classrooms, and you should watch these kids. A student will read the song, and then the kids will repeat it, and it's, it is adorable, but it's, it's cool to see the commitment that those kiddos bring to the day. Um and then up in the corner there, you can see on the right side that there's a kindergarten classroom that created their own dignity promise. And that that's up there as well, and she had all of her kiddos sign that dignity promise and what they, what they're committing to in the day, that's why. Um we also have at Perry, we have our kinder buddies. I think that's been going on for a long time. I don't know. I think that's just what we do. They're all shaking their head. That's what we do. Um our kinder buddy program cares with our kinders and with our fifth grade. Fifth graders sign a commitment to their role so that they can be a positive role model while building meaningful relationships to assemblies, dismissal, and other activities. Our FLC program also supports belonging. FLC students join that general education setting where they're well-handled by students and staff. And it, it's just so cool to see when those kiddos come in and outside with their peers around, they walk into the room and say, hey, good to see you. And it's just really cool to see um kids supporting kids and building those relationships with someone that may be a little bit difficult. Um as you see on the infographic as well, when you talk a little bit about the year. Um eighteen incidences in the past year, and in October, that's all improvement. And by factory, they don't have a ground here, right? Um it has definitely lessened. I are always efforts to provide and target support for the new classes. We did also lose um twenty five students that went back to their homeschool, which is never quite. Go back, but that is what we asked families to do. Um and besides that, with the, with supporting the year, we also have this year a K two-three specialist and intervention specialist, Mrs. Frost. She was a fifth grade teacher, but she now works at our K three intervention. Who supports students with social, emotional needs. She reteaches skills that support the Perry way. And supports teachers in the classroom with some of their behavioral needs that comes up. Um I do believe this will really help with behaviors as well. Besides supporting the SBL needs, um in K three, she also works to support students with academics. In our title math program and supports also in wellness Wednesday. She's everywhere in this building and every single space and every single classroom K through three. Now, looking at our belonging survey, um our fall belonging survey shows that Perry students feel a strong sense of connection to our school. Over eighty-five percent of our students were given validated, accepted, and treated fairly, which leads to the high-quality relationships that happen every day. The data highlights one hundred percent focus, which is a sense of appreciation. Our school focus this year is the intentional design to help students feel recognized for who they are and what they contribute. This isn't a deficit, but it's more of a direction that our students are telling them they need to grow at the school. This insight helps us redefine what we do with dignity. It also helps open our sense of being, um to help students feel seen and valued. We believe at Perry that belonging directly relates to academic success and that relationships matter. As this is my second year at Perry, and the first time, I'm gonna take on student leadership. I think I might be crazy. I'm not sure how I'm gonna fit this in my day, but I'm gonna do it. Um but we are, we have some fifth grade student leadership, and I'm really excited. There's some amazing kids, and they were so adorable when they learned that they were gonna be part of the fifth grade leadership team. Um there's nine kiddos that are selected, and it's just that chance for kids to have that positive impact by modeling kindness, respect, and responsibility. And also showing those Perry have good traits, and we're really hoping that we can get more student voice within it as well. So um picture wise, uh you can see up on the top left, there are some of our kiddos that are, did their reading done, the words, that's another jump in the classroom. And they look pretty proud there. Uh and then the one below that was the, our school was a better because we were, and that's the picture we use when we do positive office reform. But I don't know if you see those big smiles, but that is our fifth grade leadership team shortly after they found out they were part of it. Um and what was cool too besides that is some of them nominated kids, so they might have been nominated, or they could have written up an application to be a part of it too. So it's kind of cool to, to see what kids thought about their peers as well. And then, yeah, the last one, that was the dignity promise from kindergarten. Okay, next slide, community. You guys have been doing it already? Done with Mrs. Adram and Tapi? We're almost there. Okay, um so let's start with community. Our school continues to prioritize community input and shared ownership and the strength of our partnership with the PTO is central to that work. I see one PTO infographic. Not longer with us, but she's still here. Here she is. Uh the family events and volunteer opportunities this year have created meaningful touchpoints from classroom helpers to family night. That deepen relationships between students, staff, and caregivers. Um we have a new, strong newsletter engagement that shows real strong interest. Uh September reads, we had twenty eight families that have read it. We do send them on weekly. Thank you from, thank you to Sherri from Perry for sending those out on a weekly basis. Uh and then October, we rose to nine hundred and seventy-two, indicating our message, messages are resonating with four families. Our twenty-four, twenty-five family belonging survey shows a strong ninety-six percent satisfaction rate, though only eighty-five families completed it. Um to make that feedback more representative, we're developing a targeted plan during conferences in hopes that we can reach more families during this time. Um and going with that, so celebration, celebrating student success has become a visible part of our culture through positive office reform. That are sent directly to families. The responses we see that some of these are just really fun, meaningful communications. So when we send the positive office reform girls, thank you to Frau Wilson, who started this little trend. Um but those positive office for girls, when you send them up to families and then they come back and the families respond. It is, it is so adorable, and what the families, they're like, you made my day, or thank you so much for sending that out, and that makes our reaction to it. Um positive things really do make things better. Uh so we're gonna continue with those and keeping that homeschool connection um and making sure that we enjoy those as well. Some of my favorites. Um we're also working, and we talked a lot about um student-led conferences and intentionality of giving student voice in learning. When students are prepared to present goals, work samples, and reflections, conferences shift from reporting to partnering. And this is how our students clarify his next steps for families and involves self advocacy skills. Parent leadership is growing. Um we've had seven parents that are actively engaged in our own school initiatives and committees. And three families that attended our CISA meeting and contributed to our CISA. Uh we'll be continuing to work and expand on and those leadership pathways together with our PTO. And all of our volunteers, we're building a school culture with where families feel informed, involved, and invested in their student success. Uh let's see, so just to kind of tie into those pictures there, you can see on the left side, there's some of our PTO families helping out with the second grade project over there. I think they, they got this tough second grade, yeah, that was, they were working hard on that for a while. And then the middle one is just an example of the positive office reform. That's the picture that goes um home in a female, and then they get a little sheet of paper that. Um their teacher wrote up specifically for them to acknowledge them for the hard work. And then that last little picture, I thought was just kind of a nice way to end this, was I think it just shows how belonging is something that we cultivate. I mean, you can see those two cuties, the twoies up there are making that heart um with, with their bodies. And I think it kind of goes to the part where I talked about growing stronger together, but. Us at Perry is that we have to plant and we work on planting that kindness. We water, we need. And support each other and our community grows stronger when we do these things, which goes right back to what they, growing stronger together. Uh, so yeah. Hope you, I hope I get everything together in whatever amount I have there, but thank you for coming to Prairie. For being a part of this, these tall informations.
What strategies are proving mostly effective uh with the students that are, that are constantly missing school?
Those strategies are pretty, um. I think, I think when we can catch when they're walking in the door is a really good way just to kind of build those connections when they're with their parents. Hey, why are you gone today? I think we did that one today. Can we share it? Oh, well, you know what happens when you miss the bus? We want you to get here, right? And having those conversations is important because when you show up late, probably miss math or something. I think that helps a lot. I think, um. We've had our attendance conversations and then we're calling families. Any family that's below that, that um attendance rating. We're calling that. So we've been making calls the last two months. And then the next thing that will be going to will be like an attendance reward, which often works. If we can get kids to come three days in a, three days in a row. A little prize, I mean, this is where we're at. Um, and, and there's, and then that piece works as well. Um, sometimes we do attendance contract. We aren't there yet. Um, we're only two months in, but it's. Yeah.
Just from an attendance standpoint, what, I mean, what? We know what the reasons are for. Grab the attendance over and over. I mean, look, eight to five-year trend, it's actually better than it's been for most of the last four, but it's still.
Yeah.
It's terrible across the board, not just here, but everywhere.
It's hard in elementary, first of all, right? Because um. We, there, those kids aren't getting up, you know, they have families that are getting up and getting them to school. I often kind of, you know, we miss the bus. Sometimes they like to say that. Um. I think it's just, it's a number of things. It's hard to look at the kid point, we just make it fact point, but. Uh. I guess the more that we can do every day to make sure these kids are loved and that we want them here and we want them to know learning is important and learning is fun. Or we can do that. That's, that's a money maker affair. And just building those relationships with kids and teachers, making those relationships with family, those, those aspects are worthwhile.
Good job.
Alright, thank you. Alright, next we have officers and payroll.
Wait a second.
Any discussion? Alright, those that favor?
I.
Oppose? Motion carries. Operations report.
I vote we approve.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yep.
Uh, as you see, Prairie, the home sports activity, I encourage you to. Prove, a lot of these are projects that have reached completion of the small works projects and have been closed. Uh, after substantial completion was identified. So, um, that's why you see a, a number of those, like the, the Ruffin and some of the summer projects. That you just take a little bit of time to make sure we get everything complete. Any questions about our public work?
Oh, I can give you a little update on some of the other things happening in operations. And um, go on that hand. Uh, just some highlights. I just wanna say that the operation team is working so collaboratively right now and really working to create. Uh, efficient effort and uh really respond things in a timely manner. There's a couple of things that have been going on uh that. We learn about and again, have to implement and act quickly. So, uh, at the beginning of the school year, we found out that family access required to be queue for us, so the family access. Required anti-factor authentication, which means we needed to change everything in our data system to provide a better data security and access. That is a huge lift and our technology department in partnership with um SIS. Looked at how we had our roles and responsibilities for all staff members. And um implemented a multi-factor authentication. So most of you know that is if you log into your bank, you have to verify or login to another account, you have to verify it too. That's a pretty big um movement when you're looking at over eight hundred staff members and you're trying to figure out. How to uh secure all of our data and get them to authenticate. And that moved so smoothly this last week. We'll have a second rollout on the rest of the teachers uh who don't have edit or. Secure access issues. Uh, they'll have that come uh to them also, but again, the big rollout went very, very smoothly. And again, it doesn't happen just one person. It takes a lot of thought and a lot of process. Um, we've been working uh in maintenance uh for last year and along with looking at our facilities for Turk. We know we put those in a number of years ago and we're looking at how we maintain that. Uh, we partnered with Turk again and have on the annual testing and maintenance program with them. And uh, of the data, right, which is what they need to come sort of fielding, count, train and provide the access. All our main programs help us with better ways to uh take care of those skills with them alike. Generally, the life is um eight to ten years, it would probably um carry for if they implement these efficient things, they continue, we can extend the life to ten to twelve years. Um, which is really important in a field costing a million dollars. So, um, again, really good work and not to be for our staff to take ownership of the field and. Or, uh, again, in partnership with the HR, I can't say anything on the whole HR team enough. Uh, we are constantly looking to hire in operations custodians, food service, um, transportation. And again, we have continued to move forward with hiring bus drivers, uh, continuing to have two-man training to be hired, two-man drivers, five assistants. Uh, we have no custodial openings right now. We have three custodians in training for subs. And that is gonna have a huge impact on our schools. Uh, we had a lot of schools go without uh coverage and so we've had an additional subs that really impacted our revenue. We also again, in partnership with our vendors, worked really hard and as you uh earlier heard, and so for some people in the audience. We did receive the seven hundred and forty-four thousand dollar grant that's been confirmed with O S P I. Uh, so that planning started in January. There is again, no cost on our part. Uh, we will work with A T S and a couple of vendor partners to break that grid. So the four hundred building at the high school will now have an HVAC system. It's totally nice. And lastly, um, just in terms of collaboration efforts, we worked with Willmay last week. He found out. That our counties have uh passed a law um that require us to now uh deal with organic waste as compost. And we have to separate all of our garbage. That's effective in January two thousand twenty-six. So, we uh met with our first um home schools who's been doing this for a little bit, took some insight from them. Uh, our custodians provide Paul Manauer and Tina Fries, we've been service both went over there. We're putting a plan together. And yes, they're so excited. I know principals, but you know, they're hiding their eyes. Um, we will have a plan. Right? And um, this is where I'm so excited to hear about the things that students are doing and we'd like to really bring this to some of our student leaders. Talk with definitely in our middle schools and even our, you know, fifth grade leaderships at the elementaries. And talk about how students can be engaged in this kind of work. Because by twenty thirty, it will be at the home level. It will be at the residence level, just to make that point. So we will all continue this. Um, but again, what a better thing for our environment, what a better thing for us to do. Uh, to help our students understand about their contribution and how they can leave it better than they have it. Which from hearing you say often and um moving forward. And then just a couple of things on food service. We have a uh audit coming up. It's the annual audit. Some surprise happens. Um, so we're really excited to be able to, to look at the things that we're doing. I've mentioned that we have increased our meal service over this year, last year in October, to this year was thirty percent increase. That's more meals that our kids are needing and of course more garbage, but we rather them eating it, right? Um, and so, um, that's just a big kudo to all of our, our uh food service staff. Um, and Tina is working extremely hard with all of them to make sure that they are being very efficient with our uh production. And I said, there's nobody that guesses better how many kids need to eat every day than our food service staff because they are often within. Thirty meals, twenty meals, ten meals, they're producing and, and selling or giving, you know, out. And that's a really tight margin and they do an amazing job. Uh, and we also learned about a nutrition uh grant uh for equipment. So we're working on that right now, estimate in January. So that we can try to uh upgrade some of our equipment for again, energy efficiency and production. And uh, then I'm, I'm calling on some of our, our student leaders here. Uh, we are required and staff and families, community. We need to uh revive our wellness committee. Uh, this looks at our wellness policy and all of the factors that look at nutrition and health. Uh, this extends into the classroom, but it also extends into the community. So, uh, we'll be putting out some, uh, again, information. We have volunteers from the community already, but I'm looking for some students to be a part of this and also to take this um and give feedback from our students in the schools. So, uh, just looking for more information uh to join that committee. And lastly, I just have two C T M dates. It's not really my operations, but it's under my umbrella of work. Um, we have a flip night. Uh, this week on Tuesday, and I don't know if any of you got to go. But um, it is a requirement by the state that we provide financial aid training for our families and give them access to pasta and wosta. Uh, because we should have um funding that location. Um, our community partners in most of um. Our business, you know, banks and, and investment groups uh helped join our flip committee, financial learning progress uh last year and have helped us grow this opportunity. We received a thousand dollar grant from WASAP, which is the Washington Student Treatment Council to help again attract families and students into this. And we focused on the K twelve, not just seniors who need to apply for financial aid. Uh, we had. Maybe eighty fifty, it was a ten in families. That was the student, the family, the brother, sister, everybody last year. We had a hundred and seventy-six on Tuesday with interactive workshops with, um, we had Pete, uh, Credit Union put on a workshop. Only Fed along with Pam Ferris with uh Edward Jones. And then great support sponsorship from other organizations with the practice to, to donate it from O B, Washington Fields Play, who plays Credit Union. Uh, couldn't have done uh that work without them, but huge shout-outs to Nicole Mathis, Hillary Hall and uh Ashley Ellis who helped put that together. And the students helped pull that off, so. And then lastly, I just got a text, um, from Lorraine Whitecock, which is one of our head teachers, and we just received a forty thousand dollar grant. Uh, for small engines uh in the program and as that has been continuing to grow, giving us new equipment and opportunities for more students to have access to equipment rather than one. Uh, uh, engine to four kids, but now we'll have one to two. Uh, and a great opportunity for them to get deeper into their skill set um and passions that they have for their, for their um careers. So, um, just a lot of really good things happening, but nothing happens by itself. It really happens with people coming together and working together. So, there's my.
Thanks, Sherri. Alright, we have a motion on the table. Almost a favor?
I.
Oppose? Okay, motion carries. Alright. We don't have a financial report.
For this one.
Okay, the student enrollment.
Uh, that'll be updated next month, December.
Alright, word comments? Yep, down the road.
Um, well, first of all, I want to thank the Black History Education Commission on their nomination of the. Um, I know how much time and effort they put into this. And then I also wanna thank the president for that amazing slideshow of our parade, though I found myself going to the parade. Uh, I love seeing uh the fun that they were having in here for a while. And then I also like to see her have the traditions in her shows and from the other, like your mind reading. And your positive office girl, I've heard you think that. And then the monthly recognition for the students. I think that just builds such good motivation coming to school. And then, yeah, I love it. Anyway, um, also something else I heard, I think only once today. Is the level failure a very sensitive topic? I don't know. But I have a student who had um experienced a level failure before. I have students coming together and made amazing. For the students. And so, um, I don't doubt that this committee will come together again this year.
Um, uh, branching out a lot with, with how I said. Uh, big shout-outs to all the teachers that are on the staff, traditional staff, sixth years. Also, I think that was so, I think, most of us. And then another thing is growing up, my dad's in the army and I have four elementary schools all across the nation. And I have not seen anything like what occurs to their kids. It's amazing uh how much shout-outs they're giving. And I always remember that, that. Every day, just experiencing this culture, so. And then, yeah, I, I'm still. Why are you doing that? So, awesome.
Um, so I wanted to leave to both, what they both said is I really liked the, um. The uh shout-outs to all the physical counselors and psychologists at the beginning. I love this, like, when we recognize, like, all sorts of people from every school in the district and, um. Specifically Prairie today, and there was like, I saw so much going on and it's just, I think it's cool how, um. That they're like really, uh. On the belonging survey, I like that they did that and how many students felt like participating in that and all the positive results. And, um, I just think it's like, it's just really cool what Prairie has, even when I go there.
Yeah, once again, uh, here, we're listening to these meetings and I just want to say. Burn in order, or burn in time for it. Um, early education, I'll just go somewhere easy, so that was very, very insightful. And I just wanted to add, like, when I was in kindergarten, I had a total blast. Um, lots of coloring and group tables, building things in your hands dirty, blue glitter paint. And I personally don't think they're having too much fun, but like, you know, fine. They have this, I was in your area, we were on shit, it's very. I was like chat, one case you're out, do a lap round, then you find your next victim, you're out. And it is, yeah, I really appreciate it. And have that freedom. Um, I'm a little less nervous now, but it's more. Chill it down a little bit, I'm a little well in the evening now, but I got a lot of. Flip downs, you know, you know. And yeah, I think if you can make a kid to, to speak or audition to see their mom to use the time for children to get felt out. Um, then their community skills, their lack, and the secret, the first ones can suck. Um, and then when it comes time of their real school, their high school, then when they have to exercise the skills, then, you know, put themselves out there. It kind of hits them hard. Uh, so I think that what those people heard, what I was very, very um meaningful. And, yeah, it's very important to avoid how fragile early education really is. Cause if there's one insufficiency, then it'll start to snowball over the years and it becomes increasingly harder. To nurture the insufficiencies as they get older. So, thank you very much to support her. It was very meaningful. I can tell that you care a lot of students and their education, not only at kindergarten level, but also early preschools.
Um, just wanna thank all the nominees tonight. Your hard work doesn't go unrecognized. Um, I know all the principals could have dominated multiple people off their buildings. Uh, it's hard probably to choose one to give that. Uh, but thank you for all of you guys. Thank you for the donations. Uh, it's always amazing to be stepping up, filling the void out there. FFA is always. F S A is always a champion in donating every school time their names, always on the donation list. Thank you for Prairie for having us. It's always fun to be in this room. I was in here with Chris last year and watching all the kids do the unicycle and how fun that is. But thank you for Prairie for having us tonight. And with that, I know the upcoming months will be challenging, whether it's policy changes, letting talk. And setbacks, budgets, anything like that, that coming months will be challenging. But I think it's a good challenge we get in place at a lot of times. But I think the challenge all of us are ready for. And it's just important we work together, so.
Thank you Prairie for having us. And I see in the audience, there's some old Prairie banners right there. It was great conversation. Okay, so I'd like to take this opportunity to say a few words. For that, um, before. For four decades, it has been my greatest honor to serve as director of a young community school. You all, and so grateful for the opportunity to help. So many dedicated administrators, teachers and all district staff who have put our students first every single day and continue to show up. Thank you to my fellow board members and superintendents, past and especially present. Your commitment, vision and willingness to work as a team and make tough decisions have been instrumental in moving our district forward. Especially now during these challenging times. I am incredibly proud of the work we have accomplished together all these years. We have navigated challenges, celebrated achievements and always kept the focus of providing the best possible education for our children. Never give up. Four decades is a long time and the landscape.
Really long time.
Okay, four decades is a long time and the landscape of education has certainly changed. Through it all, the constants have been bright faces of our students and your dedication as leaders to God. However, the impact of our work is not just measured in years, but in the countless lives that we have touched. This experience has been more rewarding than I could have ever imagined. As I step away, please know that I will always be a proud supporter of young community schools. And the bright future it holds for our students and community. I'm living with forty years of amazing memories. I'm going to close now because I don't have any great thing. Look at me. With two of my favorite quotes. Success is not final, failure is not fatal. It is the courage to continue that counts. Winston Churchill. And then another one, most of you will remember. Remember, kids are thirty percent of our population and a hundred percent of our teacher. Gary Edwards. Thank you. I don't want any special treat that's like you've never given me for all these years.
Maybe some special treat. These are my favorite, coming to the schools, watching the presentations, just seeing what's going on, meeting the people. It's, it's nice to see that there's still some good going on because most of what we hear is all negative. It's what we're dealing with, it's all negative. So these are nice press specials for us. Just a great presentation. I also love seeing the awards because it also shows the amazing people that we do have. It's not just negativity that we can totally see on social, they deal with O S P I all the time. Now for the bad, I mean. Everything else. So we've got a lot of decisions to make, a lot of hard levy decisions to make with blackout levy funds. As you see, we have a lot of policy decisions to make. Even though the state's trying to take those decisions away from us, away from you guys, away from the parents. All I can ask for is a board member is for the community parents to continue to get involved. Whether that's helping to volunteer to raise money for programs that may not be funded anymore. Or helping us to push back against the state with some of its policies that I know a lot of the families in town from Rockaway with, as I hear from them a long time. We can't do this alone. Other districts are going through the same thing, but we need the community to work together to push back against some of these things. Because vocal control is important. That's how this was created. We're young, we're here for young families. We need to work together as one kind of pushback against what Olympia is trying to force on us. So we need all hands on that. Finally. Debbie. Uh, this has been a while ago and Debbie was actually a board member when I left the school. Debbie actually handed me my diploma. And she looked the same. Debbie, thanks for, you're her friend, you're gone on, you call, we talk, whatever. You're like a great, great, great friend. But please, I hope you feel, I know it's been a while since I stepped out there. What we've put in these kids for forty years is remarkable. And I don't want you to let you grass up your soil. Actually, I need to, this is not a, you are okay, she, we're not going to go away.
Okay. Well, I attended the young high school, military students, the military connected students. Had a chance to present at the high school. And if we get a chance to have them present again. And you have an opportunity to go and see them speak, the four students. It's worth the time to go and sit and listen to them speak. Because they serve along with their parents. And it's very important to, to go and listen to them because what you come away with. Is that sense of community and we talk about this is young community schools and then right now we need to rebuild that. And those kids have felt that and they talk about community, the sense of community. And it's something that Kendall and I talked about. You listen to that and it's those four students talk about community. We need that so badly right now. So that was something and then to see the community come together for the flip. And they were all there and I helped do pizza and that was great. And then the middle school comprehensive sexual health curriculum. What was it reviewed with the committee? And there's one of the parents that was here with us. And it was a community. Event, so to speak, and we reviewed it and they had their, we listened to them and. It was interesting to listen to everybody's opinion and I enjoyed it. It was a community thing, so we need our community to come together. And Debbie. We're going to make, we're going to make that decision still.
Just a couple of things and I also prepared something that I want to share with Debbie. First of all, I want to say congratulations to our award winners. Every staff member in our district could be given an award and could be honored. At any given point in time in the school year. And I think it's important that we find as many different ways as we can to recognize our staff. Cause they work very, very hard and. Especially under our specific conditions in our district. It's public education is so, so challenging right now. And that's not even with the additional challenges that we have. And any person that is willing to come in our schools, work with kids and show up every day. Each one of them deserves to be over. Thank you Holly for your presentation. That was excellent. You're doing an amazing job here. And I know there are days you don't feel that way, but you are. You have made a difference in a very short time. You can feel it if you walk in the building. And I know that's in large part because of your leadership, so. So I did write a few words. We are, I've heard that there are people working on an event to honor you beyond just saying a few words tonight. So that's coming. Nobody serves on a board for forty-one years and doesn't get acknowledged in the community in which they serve. So that, that will be your. So a couple of words. It's an honor to express my deepest gratitude for your forty-one years of dedicated service to young community schools board directors. You began this journey on November fifteenth nineteen eighty-four. I was twelve. And since then. Some others might not have been born. Since that day, you have helped shape this district in ways that we feel every day. Today, Young Community Schools serves roughly five thousand five hundred students and about six hundred staff. Each student represents a family and across forty-one years, you have represented and advocated for tens of thousands of children, educators and parents. That scale is remarkable, but what matters even more is how faithfully and lovingly you showed up for each of those people. Your impact has woven into safer classrooms, richer programs and countless opportunities for our young people. Your love for public schools and your love for young have always been clear. You've given and continue to give so many volunteer hours, I repeat, volunteer hours. Board members are not paid. Not for recognition or reward, but because you believe in our children and in our community. You have served selflessly. That steady behind the scenes devotion is the truest form of service. Board work is demanding and often thankless. And yet you poured in hundreds of hours of meetings, outreach and decision making simply because you wanted the best for every child that you family. I've seen students and staff seek your wisdom and feel your compassion. You model what it means to be a servant leader. You lead by serving, lift others without seeking the spotlight and stay for the hard work real change requires. Your leadership has been thoughtful, principled and rooted in love for young. And that love will ripple through this community for generations. On a personal note, Debbie, I want to say thank you. Thank you for your steady guidance. Your encouragement and the countless ways you've supported me. And stood by me probably when it wasn't safe to be near me. I will miss working with you. Your counsel has meant a great deal to me. And I'm deeply grateful for the time we've spent together serving our students and families. On behalf of the entire young community schools, families, students, parents, teachers, administrators and staff, I want to say thank you. Thank you for your tireless advocacy, for your generosity of time and spirit and the legacy of care you leave with us. We will carry forward the lessons you've taught. That public education is a shared responsibility, that community matters and that one person's devotion can truly change lives. Debbie, we honor your service, we celebrate your legacy and we promise to continue this work with the same compassion and commitment you have always shown.